All right, it's six o'clock. We'll get started. Follow the work session to order and uh move right into number three because we don't really need a roll call. Everybody's here. And awards, presentations, and appointments, mayor's appointments, beer board. It's gonna remain exactly who's on there.
Yes, sir, that's what I understand.
All right, and then on the recreation commission, commission, we had uh two names given to us, uh one being Jackie Granberry and the other one being Katrina Holton. We'll go through that Tuesday night. Uh completion and review of unfinished business.
There is none.
I'll do a short report. I'll do something quick and right quick today. Miss Willie and I spent the biggest part of the day today with Murray Alliance and Leadership Murray. It was a great day for Mount Pleasant. Started at the well and ended at uh South Central Tennessee Development. A great presentation by Travis on economic development. So it was a good day. Um wastewater, anything?
I have a report for you. Um Tuesday night, uh I'll just hit on it that they still are optimistic that substantial completion will be end of this month.
Good.
Optimistic.
Good. Anything on gas?
Uh, there is, but I have a full report for you.
Okay. New business, A, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven twenty-nine. And this is an update to our operating and revenues and expenses for the it's be our one for the year.
Uh, this would be our, the mid-year budget amendment that we do every year.
Anything you want to talk about right now?
Not a lot. Um, I'll probably go over it more on Tuesday. Um, but for the most part, you know, we've received a lot of grant funding in the last six months. Uh, insurance recovery funds, things of that nature, revenue that we didn't record, you know, at the beginning, at the beginning of the year because we didn't know we were gonna receive it. A lot of that is in the budget. And then um we are also looking into, you know, uh the commissioners, some commissioners that called and asked, you know, start looking towards the employee raises since we've kind of started giving the raises uh before year end. We try to see what our insurance rate came back, and that's usually our line item that we have some wiggle room in because we always budget fifteen percent uh increase in insurance. But if the insurance increase is lower than that, then we have some wiggle room in that line item to be able to give towards raises. So it's been uh, it's been a thing that we've done for a few years and it's worked for us. So we're trying to look at the same trend for next year, uh for this year as well, so.
Cool. Any questions?
Hope we can.
I'll have more details on Tuesday as well with all the documents and everything, so.
Good, good, good. Ordinance twenty twenty-five eleven thirty regarding Magnolia Drive rezoning. Lord, this is what you asked about. That little road right there is called Magnolia Drive.
Okay.
So the purpose of this ordinance would be to rezone property off of Magnolia Drive from white industrial to high-density residential. Planning Commission held a public hearing and then recommended this rezone. Um, the PC found that this location would support the zoning of high-density residential because adjacent lots are already zoned R3 and white industrial, so those would be uh equal to or greater than um zoning or zones. Um, so for those reasons, there would not be a, a, a negative effect on adjoining property owners. Uh, you will have your worksheet, of course, with you on Tuesday to have, to consider your findings of fact. And then there would be a public hearing on the second reading.
What? I guess. I mean, I understand, you know, it's just a rezon. I guess my thought is I mean, it's floodland, right? So they have to come in and build it up. So I'm sitting here thinking and I'm looking. I mean, that water comes halfway out in the field sometimes when it floods. So what is that gonna do to the subdivision on the other side? That's the, that's the only reason I hate to vote for something, you know.
I understand that and um the the floodplain was considered a lot in the planning commission or discussed in the planning commission by the engineer architect, by Mr. Newton. He was there and they basically said the reason that they are presenting their hypothetical plan to have the building be like a very small portion of that area. So they were requesting a higher density because they would, they understand that there would be very little developable land. Um, obviously, when you're doing a rezon, you only have to consider what's appropriate zoning for the property. And then they, they understand and everybody understands that if they come back, they would have to deal with the floodplain portions of our zoning ordinance as well as present something that meets the R3. So um yes, it's, it would be a factor, but I think that's more of a factor for buildability than it would be for the zone. Um, because right now they can build anything light industrial, but they would have that same issue. Where can they build it? What, you know, what kind of site plan would be approved? So I know it's hard, but we, but we need to stick to like what zoning is appropriate in that area based off of what's in the surrounding. Um, but that, that, that was brought up. I mean, it's inevitable. It always gets brought up, you know, what's gonna be there? What's it gonna look like, you know? Um, but that would be addressed later.
And, and I'll add to it just a little bit. Tori, exactly right. You're just, is it appropriate for the zoning? From a standpoint of looking at, it's a very challenging piece of land. They have to go through FEMA, that mitigation. Uh, if that works out, it's oversight by them and they get it up out of the plane. And then, then you go back to the thing that we talk about all time, developability of our resources too. So I think it would be a long, drawn-out uh process.
Yeah, they'll have to bring full site plans.
Of course.
Yeah, because it's, I mean, it's low.
Oh, yes.
They did have like a rendering. I mean, again, that doesn't count for anything, but I'm sure uh Chris would show it to you to see what they submitted to the planning commission.
But they definitely understood that. They don't even know if they can build it. They just know when they do, if they can ever build, they want to get as much bang out of their small buck as they can. So I don't think, there's no way it's gonna fill the whole place up. Can't.
That's just not concerned.
Yeah.
All right, any other conversation about that one? Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one. Neat. Uh, resolution declaring certain city Mount Pleasant inventory surplus property and authorizing the sale.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, uh, this is three Dodge Chargers, twenty-fourteen from Department. And then there's one from utility, a truck of two thousand eight Ford F- one fifty.
Yeah. Any questions? Resolution twenty twenty-five dash two, bless you.
Thank you.
Resolution to apply for USDA grant funding.
Uh, Mayor, Commissioners, this is with CC. Um, we have already, we approved, you guys approved a bond issue a while back for the SCAD filter system at the uh water treatment plant. Uh, after talking to Ricky, I think we can get USDA funding, uh seventy-five percent loan, twenty percent grant. Um, so I think it's, as far as the dollar price on there, we don't know yet, but to go through the application process to be able to apply for the funding and grant.
Any questions? USDA has been our friend. For resolution twenty twenty-five dash three, a resolution for SCAD.
So this, this kind of ties to the uh resolution to apply. We are in engineering agreement with CC. But with the um, I guess the strings attached with USDA and grant funding, he ought to do an environmental report. So it's a resolution. It's thirty thousand dollars added to the engineering uh agreement. Be able to cover that.
Any questions? Still help us keep those filters cleaner because we'll have three to run through instead of two. And the nice thing was when the facility was built, it was already wired for it. So all you gotta do is drop it in. I, I make that sound simple.
Excuse me, did you say that?
Well, it was.
We have to pay him in order to file for the grant?
So we already have an agreement with him to, to do design and engineer that. But when we're going through USDA, there's more, I guess, strings attached, so we have to do an environmental. But in addition, he's also gonna look at additional water sources, digging a well or recapping some of the backwash water. Um, Dale and Ted's here. If anyone will go more detail on that, that's kind of my, that's not.
You're not, you're not paying him to apply for the grant.
No.
You're, you're paying them to meet the additional requirements of USDA to get the grant.
Agreed.
Okay. Any other questions? Audit approval, and we have them here tonight to present. So what was yours?
Thank you, then, for bearing with me for a few minutes of your time to discuss the uh fiscal year June thirty twenty-four audit. Uh, you've got an insert in there. It had that, uh, I think everyone had our presentation last year from the audit. If not, uh, this can be somewhat redundant because often hasn't changed too much this past year. But uh, the letter is, is uh communications to those that are responsible for the governance of the city, and that is you. And so just to highlight some of the paragraphs that are in there. The first one really talks about our responsibility versus the board and management's responsibility for the financial statements. Ours is to express an opinion on the financial statements that are fairly presented in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. The board and management and, and is responsible for the preparation and of the financial statement. And, and then it goes on and it talks about accounting practices. Uh, specifically uh in the audit financial statements, it talks about a new one that was implemented in the current year, but this is just general knowledge in there about accounting practices, and there will be no changes uh in new, uh changes in principles and so forth like that applied by the city in the current year. Uh, does talk about on the second page, I believe, and maybe towards the bottom, about estimates that are in the financial statements. Primarily, they deal with the depreciation, estimated useful lives, and allowance for any doubtful accounts like collection of, of property taxes and, and other sales tax revenues and things of that sort. Then it gets into difficulties uh encountered in connection with the audit uh and with management and so forth, and we had none. Uh, we did it last year, we did it this year. You have a great management team. And then following that, it talks about corrected and uncorrected misstatements in the financial statements. There is a, an attachment to this letter that uh kind of, if you can flip to the very last page of that particularly. It's got a lot of numbers on it, but the first, the thing that is most important, uh, and then uh this is for some light reading for you at night. Dissect this right here. Uh, and in fact, it's so much, I don't even think, but it allowed me to have it, so. So I have to wing it. But at the top left-hand corner of it, there's some numbers. They talk about statement of income misstatement. And these are things, it says accounts payable, uh overstated or understated, and you'll see a number there and then some other descriptions below that. But what's important is you, in those first two columns, it's got government activities and then business activities. And about uh the line down there, it says cumulative effect. And it's like the one, two, three, four, one down, and there's a number of forty thousand and then a number right beside it of negative twenty thousand, which nets to nineteen thousand dollars cumulative effect over a two-year period of things that would increase or decrease your bottom line. And we deem that to be immaterial to record these things. Chipper and staff will probably look at that stuff going forward, but it's certainly not material. So that's, that was the, the thing about the accounting estimate or corrected, non-corrected misstatements. Then it gets into disagreements. Uh, we had no disagreements with management on any items as far as how the report was presented or anything of that sort. There also is a comment in there about representations by management and, and the mayor that they've signed. It's kind of like the auditor CYA that you told us everything. Uh, and, and we've accounted for that and considered it in our financial statements. Um, the, then the, I guess the, next to the last, it talks about consultations with any other accountants over possible presentation matters. Uh, and there was no, our knowledge in discussion with any other accountants or auditors about these agreements because we did not have any problems there. Does mention some limited procedures that we performed in the audit in the area of the MDNA, which I'll talk about that in just a minute, management's discussion and analysis section, and some supplementary information that's in the financials themselves. And it just says that we perform certain limited procedures, which is basically uh outside of the basic statements that we did uh tick and trace and reconcile and agree back uh information in those supplemental statements, like the pension footnotes, like the debt footnotes and things of that sort that we agree back into the actual financial statements. So that's, that is our communications to, to you as a board of things that we, we've done with the audit. Uh, following that, just to give you a few highlights. Now I'm gonna get into the actual audit report itself. And I think it's what eighty-something pages in there, so there will be a test. And I can guarantee I won't pass it, so. But uh, just to kind of give you an overview of the audit statements and a few highlights in there. Uh, there is the, the opinion, our opinion on the financial statements, if they are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted uh uh accounting principles and governmental audit principles, the GASB as well as GAS. So they're clean. Pages four and through ten of that report is just, and I've got more information about the index of the statements, but that's called management's discussion and analysis. That is prepared by management. We do agree that numbers in there back into the body of the report. But that is an excellent summary, those uh six pages, seven pages, I guess you could say, of why things go up and down. And are things good or bad in what's going on with the city with respect to both the government funds and then the uh proprietary or business funds in there? And then how we look as a government, kind of government-wide, which is a business presentation. So that's really, if you can read that convinced, that, that gives you a nutshell of what's going on with the financial statements right there. Very high level from the board standpoint. Um, notable items. Again, I, I'm not gonna run you around in statements because you can get totally confused. So it's just easier to just kind of listen to some of the things that I'll say to you. But on the management discussion analysis on page seven, there is a table there. And it's called statement of net position. That is presented on what they call a government-wide basis. Again, that is to take, take the government funds, funds which are kind of on what they call a modified cash basis or modified accrual basis and convert those funds into full accrual, which is very similar to the business side of things, which has got the water and sewer, the gas department, it's got the power department. So it puts the government funds and the proprietary funds on a business-like type basis. So I think there's probably two columns there. Okay, and just an overview of that, that the balance sheet at the very bottom, uh it, it shows uh it increased from fifty-five or from fifty-one million. I think if you go to the far right columns over there, we went from fifty-one million in total bookings to fifty-five million. And I'll sort of summarize what's happening, but that's a good thing when you see increases on that. The next page eight, the table there is the statement of activities. That is an income statement, for lack of a better word. They, uh, the government calls it statement of activities, uh, but it's an income statement. And there was an increase, if you go to the very far right again, between both uh the twenty-three versus twenty-four. There was an increase of uh four point six or two, I'm sorry, from five point five million in twenty-three to four point six million in twenty-four. Now, there's some reasons for that right there that we'll discuss, but in summary, it's the power system. They didn't have such a good year, okay? I can't tell you why, but they didn't have such a good year. You know, I'll give no more details on that.
Host.
Yeah, uh, their, their revenues were down, so their expenses were down, but it just was not as good year. Water had a good year, had a good year. Uh, the next page nine is the capital asset, and that's the big asset of the city, both for the government funds as well as for the business funds. And they increased almost eight million dollars. Uh, so that's a positive thing. Now, we did have some uh bonds that we issued about two days ago. One day rounded up to two days. Uh, and that was, that in the water treatment?
It was the water.
Water.
It was a sewer plant. It's the final borrowing for the wastewater plant. We had it in August of twenty twenty-three.
So, uh, and now the next page, um uh, I'm gonna, it, it's, it's the report layout. What index, what's the index page number?
It's the very first page, table of contents.
Table of contents.
I see that.
And, and in there, I'll just give you a layout of what it's gonna show. It's gonna talk about the audit opinion, which is on pages one through three. It takes us three pages to tell you that your financial statements are fairly stated. Okay, um um, and then the next pages four through ten, I mentioned is the management's discussion and analysis. It talks about what went on, why things went up and down in the financial statements. Then on pages eleven and twelve, are when I'm talking about the government-wide, which is making, showing us looking like we are a business enterprise on, on a full accrual basis. Then on pages thirteen through sixteen are the funds, that's the government funds. And that is primarily the general fund, capital fund, and then the non-major funds. And they're described, well, they are uh, they're, I forget what pages, they're on their way back in the back, back there, but those are the smaller funds. Drug fund, things, debt service, and things of that sort. Uh, the footnotes to the financial ta- statements, it's pages twenty-six through fifty-five. Now, that is really some very light reading right there. Uh, it takes us a lot of pages to explain these footnotes, uh, very detailed. But it, it, there's, there's been no new uh footnotes added in this year from last year. It talks about cash, then it talks about uh the accounts received. It talks about your big assets. It talks about your debt. It talks about your pension, retirement plan, some things of that sort. That's what's all in those footnotes. I won't bore you with that, but there's a lot of minutia that had to uh tie back into the financial statements. Give you a moment, catch your breath, man. Need a pause. On twenty-six through fifty-five, if you finish reading.
If we read all that, you'll fall asleep.
Many times, many times. You get crawled up. Uh, then I mentioned a term, uh supplementary, uh required supplementary information that's on pages fifty-six and fifty-seven. That's talking about the pension that we have here. And be happy that you only have two pages. We have one that we have schools, and if you have schools, they have four different pension plans. And one that we have is thirty-five pages long, just pensions description. So and if you, it takes us days to get that done right. Uh, and we still don't. But fortunately, uh, it, it just takes a long time to get that. So we only have two pages on that. Uh, then pages fifty-eight through sixty-six are the non-major funds that I'm talking about. And it's their detailed balance sheet compared to their budgets and things of that sort. Again, easy reading and another time. About the different funds. Uh, a page that is important to you, uh pages sixty-seven through seventy-five is the debt pages. And it talks about the various debt obligations that you have, the rates and the statistics and so forth like that. But that's always a good page to refer back to on the debt that we have outstanding and the maturities by year. Yeah, I won't get into the minutia on that, but that's just what's back there on the table. Uh, as the mayor talked about, he wanted to go towards the back. And, and the very back pages sixty, uh seventy-six through seventy-seven is our report on internal control and compliance here. And uh, this year, we had no findings, uh, we're very happy to say. And the uh, we had a, we had a comment last year, but that's been cleared up. And so there is no findings in internal control and compliance. Pages seventy-eight through eighty-two, and uh really eighty, all the way through eighty-five is the single audit section. And that's for all your grants and so forth. And because they exceeded, you had grant monies totaling a much bigger amount.
Four point seven.
Four point seven. Once you get over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you have to uh have a separate audit. It's called a single audit, where you have to test those, a particular program uh for various uh uh components that they require. There's twelve of them that you have to go through and, and be digging and tracing and making sure you're in compliance with that. Which uh on page eighty-five of that, there were no findings as well on, you do a great job on your single audit work as well. So that's the layout of the report. Uh, again, I've got a lot more detailed stuff, but I'll, I'll bear you that. There is a few highlights I'd like to mention that if I was sitting in your seat, just like to carry it around, no. Um, mention debt service. Debt service this year is four point eight nine for the government activities. And that compares to the year before, six point three, and you say, oh, okay. We issued some bonds this year. That has an impact on your debt service. Plus, our grants were down this year compared to last year. So when you do the math uh on it, it's just our debt service decrease, it's still phenomenal. Uh, anytime for the bankers that are around one point one, one, one point one five, one point two five, it's, you're good.
One and a quarter is the magic number.
It's the magic number. So we're sitting here at four point eight nine. It's awesome. That's at the government side. When you jump over to the business activities, they are at five point oh six. They were at four point nine the year before. So com- combined, if you will, all together, we're at five point oh two this year for the city of Mount Pleasant compared to four point, or five point one five the year before. So that is just phenomenal. It's great. It's great. That's something you can carry around in your back pocket. Uh, it's me. I have to sit on some other boards and I just have to remember certain numbers, and when I know debt service, I'm pretty good. Uh, one thing that also I wanted to mention, when you get back, and, and I'm at the page fifteen of the statement, you know, apologize, I'm trying not to flip you around in all those pages, but it's easy to get lost. But on page fifteen, I'll just give you a number. If you get there, I'm gonna make sure I got it. I know the far right, almost to the bottom, you'll see a number of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, six, three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, okay? And, and it kind of shows it's a decrease, okay? Now, that same number the year before was a positive two point one eight five. You say, oh, damn, this is not good. You know, we went from a positive two one eight five to a negative deficit, three sixty-two. Now, as you peel that back to see what's behind it, I'm gonna compare that three sixty-two this year to the two eighty, two and eight five year before, two million one eighty-five. If you take out the bond issues that were in uh the year before, two point five, and then you take out capital, or you add back what they call capital outlays, and I'm trying to do in a, in a in a gap basis, you hear the term called EBITDA. Earnings before taxes and depreciation and all that kind of stuff. I'm trying to get to an EBITDA kind of situation. So when I add back my capital outlay expenditures by the city this year of one point eight compared to one point one the year before, that's an add back. Then I take out the impact of capital grant revenue this year. I come up with an adjusted two thousand and twenty-four bottom line of eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars positive compared to that same comparison year before, four hundred and sixty-four. So we're up four hundred and five thousand dollars increase. So, so again, that's just a number you can carry around in your back pocket. Next, dirt, debt service is good. Uh, the government's wide things, our funds are good. When you take out those changes in, let's say, debt and grant, we're good. Uh, and I, I did mention, I've got some details here. If you, if you exclude the power and if you just look at water and gas and sanitation this year to the year before, uh, had an increase. The year before, the number was the bottom line of EBITDA was six hundred, uh, six thousand dollars the year before in twenty three compared to five hundred and eighty six thousand positive in the current year. So again, the, uh, business funds are doing great, except for what maybe happened over in power. And power, it didn't do as well. It, it went down about six hundred.
I'm sure, which I used to be on the power board too, and I don't even know if that has any effect on it or not. I think, you know, they was redoing Mount Joe, you know, and doing all of that, so that.
It could, and we tried to dissect it. Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't tear the numbers apart on them. I mean, we've got their numbers, but it, it didn't help. They, they, their management's discussion and analysis on their audit did not tell me why there was a decrease there. But yes, now, being in the utility world, uh, you know, they capitalize everything. You can't make them stay in the utility sixty, fifty years. I spend a day, I'm gonna have a time. Don't take that off. But, uh, but no, I, I'm, I'm sure that they've got that under control. With that, uh, you know, I am concluding our, our remarks on the financial statements. Like I said, uh, they, it's very, last year and this year as well, we've been very happy with the, with the numbers. You've got a great management team here. We've been very fortunate to work with them. I have mentioned to Shipra, uh, some of us in our, uh, firm are getting a little long in the tooth, mainly me. Uh, so we are going to be discontinuing, uh, our audit side of the practice. Now, we're continuing to do work in accounting and tax work, but just the, the audit side is time for the younger people. And, and we have a, uh, kind of a, an alliance, if you will, with another firm that, uh, that I've mentioned to Shipra that is quite, they have, we've worked with them. Uh, they're reconfident, they're accepted by the comptroller's office, and they're quite willing to, uh, continue along with the arrangements that we have here on a fee as well as competence level. I can't speak for them exactly, but I know that they, they are, they're certainly approved by the comptroller's office and have knowledge of doing governmental entities and stuff for. So, uh, but we have certainly enjoyed our two-year tenure here.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Appreciate you helping our city do good.
Hey guys, well, you got it right here. Right there. You, you got it, you, right there, you're very fortunate.
You said approved it though.
Yeah, well, but you have a positive need here, so we're, we're very happy with, with everything. Appreciate everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much. Oh, and I guess one thing, we do need somebody who can let us know if we want approval. Yeah.
Tuesday night, Tuesday night.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all very much.
It's a little different than the snow that we had last year.
Yes. Yes.
Thank y'all.
Thank you again.
May I say, do you have any questions?
Have you? It's, I brought mine.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Different thinking here, thank you for what you do.
I was, I was gonna add like two, two or three things when he was talking, because like, the water was good this year because we raised our rate.
Right.
Gas on the net, it wasn't that big of an impact on the total, so he didn't bring it up. But gas was lower than the prior year. We're trying to, you know, work on rates with symmetry right now, so hopefully we'll have something for y'all to. But again, as long as we're working towards a goal, and if the comptroller's office does reach out to us, if they see that, because once they submit the audit, they have a team at the comptroller's office that audits our audit. So we get comments back, and they will send comments back to the auditor stating anything that they see. Um, but if they see that and they contact us, we have proof, you know, that we're already working with symmetry to try to see about our gas rates, because we have not changed our gas rates in a very, very long time. Um, and that's a huge part of our gas fund. We expect the winter months to help us in the summer months, and that has not been working out for us for the last few years. When he was talking about the business versus government funds, I try to say that every year is, uh, government funds are all the tax receiving funds. Business funds are all of our utilities, um, where we don't receive any taxes, it's all fee based. And then the Mount Pleasant power audit is done by somebody else. But because they are under the umbrella of the city, they submit our, their audit to us, and then it becomes part of our book. So the pension plan and some of that stuff that's in there is the power companies and not necessarily under our purview. But all of it is part of our audit, and when it gets submitted to the state, you know, I let the power company know that it's been submitted. So they do run under us as part of their audit. But that's pretty much the only things I had to bring up on the audit. And then the, the reduction in the capital project, we had borrowed money and like he was saying, we borrowed that money and we started using it. So that was sitting in our fund balances, and we started paying for the downtown project in June. So, um, that's where we took a little bit of a hit, and that's probably gonna see, go down even more. But when you turn around and look at the grant funding we are getting, since it is a grant match, we may end up netting it. Um, but that is where we have seen the downfall, because of course we borrowed that money two, three years ago, and we've been having it in our fund balance as cash. But as, as the project's, uh, been worked on, we're trying to pay it out, so. That's all I have. But if you all have any questions for me, but, or when you all review it, and if you have any questions for me on Tuesday, I'll be one of them happy to answer.
Shipra, may I add to that on the water side? So on the water side, it is, it's healthy, but if you look at that, you know, the rate study we did a couple of years back, we're borrowing them in the middle of the wastewater, so all that's accounted for, so we're able to pay that back. And so we move forward with what we're doing now and the wastewater treatment plant. I just wanna make that note too.
This is a fantastic college, y'all.
Yep.
I mean, five point oh two debt service is every great show. Been in the banking industry for forty years, I'm telling you, you don't see that every day.
You wanna go borrow some more, right?
We're gonna have to.
We gotta borrow for the skid and the meters here pretty soon.
But we're getting nice grants for it as well.
That's true. The, the, the rest of our grants, all of our matches, we have them in cash majority. When we say, yes, we have matching funds for a grant, we already have that money in the bank. But when we come up on big projects is when we go borrow.
All right, approval for each merchant street repairs?
So, uh, doing it, we, we submitted bids yesterday at one P M, no one submitted. Uh, we have reached out, I think it was a holiday schedule, uh, because harness their bid last time, they said they would get it in if we reopened it. And no, um, nickel, they, they come out and look at it again, but they didn't submit. So we're, we're going to put it back out for bid, and hopefully next month there will be some of those to us.
But we might as well get us bid. All right. Any questions, Philip on that one? Downtown project change order.
So you'll have your package Friday change order, and I have Ted here, if you wanna get really, really into the details of the change order. But basically submitting a change order, uh, the balance, one hundred and thirty four thousand dollars. So what, what the change order is, when they did the utility lines, the lines were not exactly where they said on GPS, so they had to go out into the street more. So from, uh, Lightning's Bar Shop all the way down to the church and back up the other side to here, it's a wider strip. And what that is, is basically rebuilding the road for a couple of feet outside of that, all the way down and all the way back. So that should cover every change order to this point. We, there will probably be another one before said and done on Halon, because the same thing, um, we won't have to build those roads back to the same standard as T dots, but if you dig it, it just follows the case then. So we had to fill the underlaying back up and have it repaid down at City Hall. So I do anticipate another change order before said and done, but this covers everything from, uh, maintenance down and back.
Um, you know, which I talked to you, Philip, about it. You know, when it's all done, you know, we don't have, we're not doing bluegrass. But, you know, where we have tore up the road, I just don't think it would look good if it's not, at least. So.
Yes, sir. So I have a request that, and Ted is here too. Anything that we had to go like down on Halon, past the scope, we've asked them to put that in there on the bottom. And even on, uh, bluegrass, if it doesn't go where we had to get, because utilities didn't exactly know where the thing was, we will at least go to where this project snuck, and put it for you guys for consideration on the change.
And Mike, I'm with you, because
Yeah.
the one I, we were discussing on anything, it's right out here. You do all this work, you got all that done, you gonna have that road tore up in pieces? Come on.
Right.
I mean, it just doesn't make sense.
And that this change order is not exact as quantities, um, it's probably not only that. It shouldn't be more because they're estimating quantities. So you're just getting approval to be able to do this, and it'll be in the bottom part. Is that, am I right, Ted?
All righty, any questions? I think we, I mean, we all knew there'd be some change orders. You got a project decided it's gonna happen. C T form for police and fire department, fire department vehicle leases.
Leases were done. Everything was, uh, we signed the lease paperwork about thirty, forty days ago. So we've submitted the C T form to the state. It's just a F Y type item, no voting or anything. It's just by state rules, uh, once the debt is complete, completely done or in executed, I have to submit to them that we've officially signed the documentation, so that's that form.
Any questions? All right. Laura, anything? We don't have anybody for the comments, it's just, yeah, Mike?
Well, I just bring up a couple of items, in, uh, in which I've talked to Philip, you know, on one of them. And, and I appreciate what the city has done, and also codes people. And I won't go into a lot of detail, but it's to do with the business up on Oak Lane. And, and I promise you, those people up there that runs that business is appreciative that this problem was fixed. And I appreciate it.
Yeah, and it's codes department, nothing I did was codes.
But, uh, and, and on another one, I had a neighbor that lost his dog. And I told him, I said, well, I'll go up to the, the Murray County Animal, you know, and see if I can see your dog up there. So I went up there and I, I met Kim. And, uh, and I told her who I was and I was looking for that dog, but she said, well, let me give you a tour of this place. I was blown away. That place is clean. It, it surprised me, it really did. So I guess that's some of the money that, that we give to go to that. I feel like, you know, from just my opinion, going and investing is, is worth it.
Well spent is old saying, though.
They've asked for an increase for next year. Um, I think it was seven thousand dollars for next year's budget. So of course we'll bring it to y'all, because they're wanting to add. They, they, they haven't done any renovations to that building in I don't know how long. So with the growth in Murray County, it needs an addition, or I think they're completing it. So they, they do have a higher donation request. They had it for this year and we turned it down, so they of course asked again for next year, so.
Long as it don't interfere, I guess, with our employees.
No, yes, of course. And that's for the budget year, this, we do the, that's why we do the raises ahead of time. The raises are done without, the budget is separate, yeah. The raises are kind of on this side, and then all the other stuff in the next year's budget.
No.
No.
I think, I think somebody picked the dog up.
Where?
I just wanna pick our staff for the bad weather we had. I think Michael told me they had two rags. So I appreciate everything y'all doing for the city, working, while doing more, appreciate.
Hey, I came outside and my water main in front of my house is broke, I guess, so got fixed really quick, and thank you. It's, um, you know, with all the stuff we see around the country in cities where it's big cities, it's so fancy and, and nothing's getting taken care of. It's, it's really great to know that in our city, our people are on the job and keeping it safe and secure. So we appreciate you a lot.
Mike?
I just, I just have one more, uh, on, you know, with, uh, I guess forty three, I keep on saying forty three, two forty three. Anyway, uh, we, you know, last month, you know, they can't put the speed limit down, correct?
He said he's working through that.
If, and I know we've said in the past, or they have, they said if y'all leave signs, we'll give y'all the signs you want. So can a sign be put, you know, uh, like from seven o'clock in the morning to nine o'clock? I mean, I'm.
Talking about speed?
Yeah, yeah, reduce speed, I mean.
Just reduce speed, possibly? I don't know if it's within the timeframe for this.
Yeah.
But I think, are you asking, have a sign saying please reduce speed?
Yes, yeah, at least something, you know.
You probably could during construction zone, but I don't.
Not, not for, not for.
Legally, you can change, the only time you can change is, depends on B, like speed from this time to this time, it's during construction.
Oh, okay.
I don't think you can.
So this here would not be considered. Okay, okay.
We've got people out there in the morning.
Oh, I know that, but I just thought about that, you know? I just didn't know if you could put the signs up.
I've noticed the state's been out there pretty regularly lately, too.
I'll, I'll call Mr. Rogers in the morning and ask, inquire about the speeding again, because he didn't say nothing. Challenge to get that changed, so I'll stay on top of it. Okay. One more thing, um, leadership Murray was a great day, but Michael got his annual, she say, got his annual recognition of being a hero. You have to relive the story every year.
I like the story.
Let's hear it.